We do have two board members traveling for work and they have dialed in tonight, Mr. Hanlon and Mrs. Kolevitz. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bledner?
Here.
Ms. Booton?
Here.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon will be joining shortly, Ms. Crackery?
Here. Dr. Sloggy, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshop setting. Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Booton? Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Bledner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yeah.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Crackery?
Yes. Okay, we have one item tonight, Vision 2026, Academic Excellence Strategies.
Yeah, so just quick reminder for the board, I know well aware of this, that we really targeted our committee of the whole meetings this year to focus very intentionally on updates to your Vision 2026 strategic plan, both strategies and obviously the data points that sit on your dashboard. And so, back in the fall, we spent quite a bit of time over two meetings, one both helping the board get comfortable or familiar with the FastBridge data and information, since it really sits as a foundation to a lot of our academic excellence strategies and the work that we're monitoring on our dashboard, and then moved a little bit deeper into some of the actual strategy work. Tonight, Melissa is going to take you through an update of a few of the key elements that sit on that work plan, give you updates specifically to some of our learning acceleration work, updates to a few of our balanced assessment items, and then move into the post-secondary college career pathways work, and again, give you a couple of really important updates, and have an opportunity to get a little bit of feedback, and also give you a mid-year glimpse on where we are with some of the learning acceleration data as well, that'll kind of all be rolled into that. I'm going to take one really quick bird walk and just mention to the board that at your next regular board meeting in March, we'll be at Wheat North for that board meeting, we were already planning to do a couple of celebrations at that meeting that include our National Merit students, as well as our all-state musicians, had an exciting weekend at Wheat Warrenville South, both the speech team as a team, and then three individual students groups of students won state championships at the IHSA speech competition. We also had an individual state champion in gymnastics, and so, we are inviting all of the students to the March meeting, so that we can recognize, obviously, students consistent with your practice, but it'll be an exciting meeting, and when you think about it, kind of fun, right, you're really recognizing students in kind of all four quadrants of academic achievement, athletic achievement, extracurricular speech, and then arts, music. So, it'll be a nice opportunity to see the talents of our students. So, just heads up, that's coming in March. And without further ado, Melissa, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, I am doing an update on three of the strategies that sit under the academic excellence strand of our strategic plan, and so, those are implement learning acceleration strategies and programming, design and implement a balanced assessment system, and expand programming to prepare our students for a full range of post-secondary opportunities. So, we are going to start with the learning acceleration portion, and so, the way that this presentation is put together is we're going to dive into each of those three deeply, and so, here we are, starting with learning acceleration. We've also organized the presentation around the same three guiding questions for each section, and so, we'll start here with what was included in our work plan for this year, for this particular strategy. So, the work plan focused on four priorities. One, implement illustrative math for grades K through five. Two, pilot and adopt high-quality ELA curriculum for grades K through five. Three, pilot, adopt, high-quality math curriculum for grades six through eight. And then, four, engage in collaborative research to begin curriculum work in ELA and social studies for grade six through eight. So, I'm going to start here, because this is really an opportunity to provide you with some background knowledge about how we really go about all of our work with curriculum implementation. And so, it really follows these four phases. And so, we start with phase one being research, then we move into phase two being about pilot and selecting a resource, phase three being about preparing to launch, and phase four, teach and learn. So, in phase one, there are four steps that all work together. We start with the professional learning for both our administrative team and also our staff. That professional learning helps us to form an instructional vision, which helps us select materials, and then we move into the pilot of the materials. We make a selection of what materials we would like to recommend to the Board of Education. Once we make that recommendation, then we prepare local materials for our implementation. And then, phase four is that teach and learn, where we continue to support our staff and seek feedback and adjust our plans. So, the next two guiding questions are really going to be addressed together in the next few slides. So, with each of these four phases, we actually have four different work projects in four different phases right now. So, I'm going to start here with the implementation of IM in grades K through five. The board has heard a lot about this work this year. Last year, our focus was, we did all of the work for phase one, two, and three. This year, our work has all been in phase four, and that, in particular, there's been a plan on supporting our staff through the three pillars of professional learning, which do include coaching, planning, and that's collaborative planning, and it also includes training our staff. We're consistently monitoring our data, you're going to hear more about that in the second part of the presentation. We also are consistently seeking feedback. Danielle Moran has a group that she meets with monthly, and it has a representative from every single school, and they continue to engage with their building staff and provide feedback to Mrs. Moran that we continue to use and work with our team and our coaches. And then, we are always adjusting our plan based on that feedback. Our next step would really be planning for just an annual reset on what we learn. I would draw your attention in your green folder, the first document that sat behind the slide deck is titled, K-5 IM Professional Learning, and this is a one-page document that captures all of the professional learning opportunities that we've put in place this year for our staff. I really have to recognize, it's been a great team effort. Mr. Spencer has provided professional learning, Dr. Sloggy, Dr. Pueyo, of course, our coaches, our principals, Dr. Moran, and so, you'll see that our team has been very involved in the professional learning opportunities, plus, we've had the opportunity to bring in IM trainers to work with our staff on multiple occasions. We have a big training coming up on March 3rd. Every one of our elementary teachers will be attending a session with IM trainers. And we've also had something called Collaborative Plan. So, every one of our grade levels has had a half-day each trimester to work with their math coach, to really engage in something we call unit internalization, where they dive into the units, and they understand, they learn more deeply about what, you know, the assessments are for that unit, and they'll engage in working with the math coach and learning about the lessons. The next, the next big work project here is around K-5 ELA curriculum. And so, last year, we started this work, and you can see the asterix indicates the two items we started with last year, and then, the checkmarks indicate everything we've been working on this year. So, right now, we're engaged in a pilot of two resources. So, at every one of our elementary schools, we have two classrooms that are piloting, plus, we have additional specialists that are involved. So, those specialists include PACE, multilingual specialist, resource teachers, LLC directors. And so, half of our buildings right now are piloting a resource called Bookworms, the other half are piloting a resource called American Reading Company or ARC Core. Coming up, the first week in March, they're going to flip-flop materials, and they're going to engage in the other resource. Our plan then is to make a decision coming up at the end of April, and bringing an update to the Board of Education in May. So, and then, we're going to move into the whole prepare-to-launch phase after that.
Melissa, can you, in that professional learning space, even kind of stepping back to last year, can you give some sense of kind of what's involved in that, like foundational professional learning, before we even get to the, like, preparing for the pilot piece?
Great question. So, there was a significant amount of work that happened at that very first line item of professional learning, and so, we engaged in, with our reading coaches and our administrators, we engaged in studying the shifts. And this includes a focus on the science of reading, and a focus on systematic explicit phonics instruction, along with a focus on best practices of writing, evidence-based reading and writing. And so, we spent three, four months studying that, and that really did inform the instructional vision that drove us to exactly what types of resources best matched what we learned about through that professional learning. And actually, it didn't stop there. We then engaged in professional learning with staff over the summer that were interested in also participating in a book study or learning more about those shifts. And then, we even went as far to train all of our, or sorry, all of our classroom teachers in September about those shifts as well. Sure. So, when we use the term shifts, very simply, that means maybe making a little adjustment in your teaching practices. And so, the ways you may be doing something need to be revisited based on new research about how students learn.
Mrs. Murphy, can I ask a question? Following up on that, because it popped in my head. So, during this pilot period where we have two classrooms in each school piloting the new curriculum, when you see, explaining the shifts, like, are the other classroom teachers shifting? Shifting away from, I believe it's Fanta's and Penel?
So, we've engaged our staff in learning about what those shifts are, and we've put together several activities that our staff could try out in making those shifts. And so, Fanta's and Penel is an interesting one that you bring up. I know that that's gotten a lot of attention in the media, and until we have another assessment, some of our staff are still utilizing Fanta's and Penel, but not to the same degree that we have in the past.
Thanks.
I was just wondering if you could describe the four shifts?
Sure. So, the four shifts that we focused on specifically is, first and foremost, strong foundational skills. Now, this isn't really a shift, because this is something we have always believed in, in District 200, but the shift is making sure we all have a common resource that is in line with explicit systematic phonics instruction. That's the shift, making sure we have that resource. That's number one. Number two is text complexity. And we know that by the time students graduate, that they need to be reading at a certain level to be successful in post-secondary education, and that's backmapped all the way down to second grade, what those different levels of text complexity are. And so, the resources that our teachers are utilizing right now, all are focused on grade level reading. So, if you're in second grade, you will have second-grade reading materials in your hand every day. Third, it's evidence-based reading and writing, and this is something that is absolutely always been a part of the high school experience, and this is really important when students move on into post-secondary education. The right to do in post-secondary is all about informational writing, is all about evidence-based, what you read about, you need to be able to write about. You need to read several different pieces of information on a topic, you need to synthesize them in a manner and write about it. And then, the last is knowledge building. And so, instead of students experiencing something like this, today, you would read about pumpkins, tomorrow bats, the next day, stars. Instead, the materials that our staff are utilizing right now are organized around one topic of study that they research at a deep level. And so, for example, today, I was with some third-grade teachers, they were utilizing the ARC materials, and they did an entire study on animal adaptations. And so, at the end of that study, they did some evidence-based reading and writing, and produced a book about everything that they learned about animal adaptations. So, I hope that helps, that expands upon those shifts.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move into the next curricular project, and that's for math. Now, last month, the board approved the adoption of IM for grades six through eight, which we're really pleased with. I think this'll probably be the first time in District 200 history where we have a K-8 universal resource, and that coherence, so we're very excited about that. So, you can see that last year, the work was all in that research component, and then, this year, we piloted, selected the materials, and now, we're moving into training and developing local implementation materials. So, on March 3rd, all of our middle-school math teachers will also be engaging in training with IM on that date. And our coaches and Mr. Chatterster are currently working to develop local implementation materials. So, what does that mean? It means we're putting together new guidance around Math Lab. That is in line with our IM materials. We're putting together guidance for multilingual learners and how you best engage them in the classroom with this resource. Those are some examples. And then, lastly, here's the project that isn't as far along, but it's exactly in line with what we planned for this year. We planned on starting all the way over there on the left-hand side with research, and that's exactly what we're doing. So, for middle school, we have a steering committee that is made up of teachers from all of our middle schools, and we've started engaging in that professional learning, exactly the same way we did with our elementary staff. So, we're studying those shifts. This is really exciting as well, because our high school chairs are a part of this work. And so, it's been really beneficial to bring, you know, the high school perspective to the conversation as well. And then, we'll move into establishing that instructional vision by the end of the school year. Social studies is the other area that we've mapped out to get started with. For social studies, ISB actually has adopted some new standards, but the final version is not yet available. We have engaged in professional learning. State Board of Education arranged for some educators across the state to be part of a professional learning group this summer. So, it was about 100 educators that were selected to be a part of the first professional learning group. I was a part of it, and two other administrators in District 200 had that opportunity. And so, we're really at a point right now where we're trying to learn as much as we can about those new standards, and here as well, we're working with our high school chairs to help inform that work as well. So, our next steps for learning acceleration include these five right here. So, for every one of the previous slides, I had a little star on what we're doing next, and so, we're going to work on everything that had a little star. We're also going to use everything that we have learned from IM and from our ELA pilot materials to develop additional guidance for the components of Portrait of a Graduate. So, if, for Portrait of a Graduate, you know, communication and problem-solving are two of our components. Well, those are very prevalent in our ELA curriculum and in our math curriculum. And so, we really want to get to a space where we are mapping out benchmarks for, so we really have clarity for our staff on what does success look like for those Portrait of a Graduate components. We also are going to review the results from our dashboard and set goals for, we're always looking for focused school improvement planning. We have to prepare our work plan for next year. And then, this last one, we're going to work with our staff to provide high-quality instructional materials for newcomers. And that leads me to the next document that sits in your green folder. So, it's a sheet with a lot of data on it. So, Dr. Pueyo put this together for us. The, this whole sheet is multilingual enrollment data as of about a week ago. And you're going to see several columns. I want to draw your attention towards the end of the document where it has newcomers, and it says, "School Year 23," and newcomers, "School Year 22." And you're going to see for every one of our buildings, the number of newcomers that have enrolled. And when I say newcomers, those are students with beginning language levels. So, they need a lot of support in English language learning. And so, you can see, we've seen a large increase in the number of newcomers that we have in our school. And Dr. Pueyo also reminded me that we have to remember, got to add those two columns together, because even if they were a newcomer last school year, they're still a newcomer this school year. They're still on their journey of learning language. And so, because of that, our multilingual specialists have asked for specific resources that are designed specifically for newcomers. And so, they've been engaging in that curricular process as well, they've been researching materials, reviewing materials, they engage in a process of defining an instructional vision, and we do plan to bring a recommendation to the board in the future of materials that the group is recommending, so.
Melissa, the challenge in that space, right, like, I just want to clarify, is attempting to balance moving their learning progression forward while we're focusing on language acquisition, right?
Exactly.
So, you know, if you simply pause to focus only on language acquisition, you lose a whole year of, like, academic progression inside the discipline.
Exactly.
I know that staff has written recommendations for what resources have been needed, but I was wondering if you could just give us an idea of those types of resources? Is it like materials, or is it extra staff?
It's materials. So, materials directly created for teaching beginning English language learners.
Melissa, so, just want to clarify, the newcomer, School Year 22 total is 96, School Year 23 is 126, so the 96 is not included in the 126?
They're not duplicate.
Okay, so, we already anticipate 126, or is that what we currently have?
That is what we currently have.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a note, that, you know, it is something that Dr. Kyle and his team have wrestled with as well. I think what's interesting in the trend is not just the number, it's really kind of the distribution across the district, right? So, if you look at some of our buildings and, you know, take, look at Edison as in- So if you look at some of our buildings and, you know, take, look at Edison as an example, it has not typically been a building significantly diverse in language diversity. Thus, they only have one and a half EL or multilingual teachers. And so when you add four newcomer students to a caseload that's already pretty tight, just staffing-wise, that came as a bit of a surprise this year. And to be honest, it came, you know, to some degree, came like right before the start of school, sometimes even weeks into the start of school. We had to really significantly kind of adjust, both adjust staffing plans and try to add to the staffing plan. So certainly, what we saw this year was a little bit of a surprise and one that I think caught us a bit off-guard in terms of trying to plan. So we're also trying to look ahead to some degree, both in special education and in multilingual. We've always staffed pretty tight to the need. We don't want to overstaff and not, you know, have the need. We've staffed pretty tight and, you know, to some degree, that probably caught us a bit at the beginning of the year. So it's something we are looking at as we, you know, move in. And last little piece that I'll just mention is that also, when you look at multilingual enrollment, so if you go to the total ML, that third column, and see that we're just shy of 1,200 students in the multilingual program, the 310 that's in the column next to it, again, those are not the same students. So we have 1,200, almost 1,200 students actively receiving support in multilingual and 310 students that have recently exited. But we are still responsible for monitoring and making sure that they don't slide back. So the total number of students that we're actually supporting through Dr. Pueyo's department, you have to add those two together. It's about 1,500 students that we're supporting.
There's a large percentage of 12,000.
It's gone up. Yeah, no doubt, and it's gone up.
I have a couple of questions on the numbers. The 126, most of those at the beginning of the year, or is there, they kind of ramp up during the year?
There was, there was a little, there was an add across the year. And so I don't have the exact number that we started with, but if you look at the notes section, you can see where we had to do some adds. So we had to do an add at Lincoln because we got additional students. And even most recently, we've posted a position that would be halftime at Weasbrooke and halftime at Pleasant Hill due to increased enrollment that just happened recently. So yeah, the notes column really gives you a good idea of where we've seen that pocket of increase.
And so would those notes mean that there was increase after the start of the year?
Yes.
And then any idea about the, what's the driver of the, you know, the largest increases? Are, you know, all Northside schools, Pleasant Hill, Monroe, and Wheaton North? Is it, any idea what's driving that? If it's refugees, if it's people exiting the city?
I don't have that specific information. I'm looking around at my colleagues.
There definitely was an increase in some of the resettlement. So, you know, I think there were, for a number of years, kind of middle of the pandemic, we didn't see a lot of kind of world relief resettlement. And there's been kind of a resurgence of that. But I don't want to speculate on exactly where they're coming from and say it wrong.
Is it ever advantageous to consider, with the newcomer population consolidating? Like, I look at the numbers between North and South, and would we ever consider taking the South students and having them as part of the North program or no? Just in terms of staffing?
Yeah, yeah, so it's a good question, right? Fair question. Certainly from a staffing efficiency perspective, yes, it would be more efficient, right? If you've clustered it. I think, given the target and the goal of being able to exit and navigate students out of the multilingual program, I think the sort of more desirable outcome has been to keep them in their home school, to not keep them where they're separated from the peers that they're living around, right? The friendships that they develop. So, I mean, we've, certainly, there are districts that utilize that model. District 200 never has, I think, in the same way that really almost any of our other special service programs. Absent a student that really needs a very specialized, self-contained program, we try to leave a student inside their home school when we can, simply for, you know, kind of exit-out purposes.
Do those newcomers have to take the same assessments? Even, you know, the internal ones through FastBridge and the required ones?
Yeah, so in fact, we're just coming off of doing access testing. So that's the yearly test that every multilingual student needs to take. It's about language acquisition. And so they take that, and then we're going to come up on our state assessments. And so I'm actually glad you brought this up because, you know, these are students who have limited English, and they engage in a English reading test and a math test that is in English. And they also do, we have them participate in FastBridge because that's meaningful for us, because we can see growth over time. And you have to remember too, FastBridge is an adaptive test. And so it will, it will scale down so that we can get, you know, a different grade level range for them. So, but the state test is on grade level.
So if somebody comes in March? If somebody comes in March, they have to take a state assessment a month or so later? They might not even have any language acquisition yet?
Yes.
How long have we tracked this kind of data?
Multilingual data? I'd have to get that, we track it every year. So, one, we have to-
Do you think we have for 15 years, for five years?
I would imagine we have the data. We'd have to pull the data together, right? It might be in a few places. But certainly, we, obviously, we track it now because of the service through the programs and also through the evidence-based funding formula we do for enrollment purposes.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to do that. I was just curious.
And you can remember too, that information is on the Illinois State Report Card. It won't indicate to this degree of specificity about newcomers or monitor students, but every year you can see the enrollment of multilingual students across all of our schools and the district.
Piggyback on Angela's question, I'm not proposing this, but are there any examples of districts that have consolidated all the multilingual learners into a school, almost like a magnet school? For a period of time, I mean, I would imagine maybe some of the larger districts might do that, but are we familiar with that?
I doubt that a larger district would do that, Brad. One, I don't believe that would be considered best practice, right? It's, it would be akin to, right, as you think about the whole goal of a 70-30 model, when you talk about serving students with special needs, it's all about making sure that students have models. Same works in language, right? So if you, I think, as students are trying to acquire or learn a language, same as you learning a foreign language, right? If you're not using it regularly, then there's limited sort of application to the language. And so I think what actually helps our students grow the most is the support they receive from our staff, but also the supportive school environment around them where they're actually practicing those language skills, whether it's at recess, at lunch, at, you know, the other pieces. So again, I think you would gain efficiency, but it would be considered arguably negligent practice if you did that.
I'm going to give a very tangible example as well. So I've had the opportunity to go in many classrooms this year to watch IM. And there's a portion of the IM curriculum where our students engage in what's called centers, in their games and activities. And so I was in a kindergarten classroom, and I saw a newcomer engaging in a game with a English, native English speaker. And that newcomer was able to engage in the game and was learning the numbers by playing the game with the English-speaking peer. And so it was really powerful. And that's the power of like the curriculum we chose, because it's very language-based and game-based, and allows the opportunity to learn from peers.
Can I follow up on the assessment for English language learners? So doesn't the state provide for accommodations, like so that they can be dictated to, or I guess, read to, and then they can dictate, or is that?
Yeah, they would get additional time. And you can, there's like some read aloud portions for math, but the reading test, they need to be able to read that.
Thank you, state.
I'm just surprised because there is, you know, they have 64 pages of accommodations for testing, and that seems so absurd to take someone who doesn't speak the language and have them, expect them to read it. I mean, it's just setting them up for failure. But I guess maybe that's the state dictating that.
I think that the challenge, right, so it's twofold, right? It doesn't make sense. I think from a state perspective, and I guess I want to just be careful in providing a rationale, I'm not trying to defend the state and the practice, but from their perspective, how do you then decide who gets to opt a student out of the test, right? So also, if the state is providing too much flexibility that an individual district is determining who has the language proficiency to take the test, given, I think, all of sometimes the scrutiny and the public attention that goes around test scores and the way that those numbers, I think, sometimes get grossly misrepresented out in the community, if you allow districts to have that sort of latitude, then what the state, I think, deals with is sort of inequities in terms of how districts decide, well, you know, well, which of those 1,200 students really are capable of taking the test? Because if I really want to kind of play a game of driving proficiency percentages, then I excuse as many of them as I can that I don't necessarily think are going to do well. So I think at the state level, you sort of have this, you know, two sets of metrics that were held to. One is pretty absurd proficiency levels when you look at some of the data, but two is were held to levels of students that take the test. So we must report and show that our students, sort of regardless of language need, regardless of learning need, absent those that are, you know, taking sort of the DLM, which is a really narrow band that we're allowed to, we have to show percentage of participation. So it's sort of a catch-22, right? Like, I agree, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, but then when you have 900 districts allowing districts to sort of determine who takes and who doesn't, then create situations where people play games to sort of inflate score percentages because of the way that gets misrepresented at times, but.
Then are the scores shared with the students? I just think that would be so defeating to have a score result. Can the parents, and I don't know that they would choose to, but they could opt their child out of the testing?
So, I mean, technically, if a parent just did not send their child to school on that day, they wouldn't take it. But you have to, again, so, you know, I just, I look at the number, look at what that represents. If for whatever reason, all 1,200 students, they wouldn't do it, but opted out, then we would be significantly penalized as a district by the state because we'd be under required participation levels.
Yeah, we have to be at 95% of our students taking the assessment.
So, yes, an individual parent, and again, I'm not going to say that, you know, I think our participation percentages every year are usually just shy of 99% of our students take the assessment. So we have some percentage of students that for whatever reason don't show up. We also have circumstances, if somebody's sick and by the time they come back, parent and school together decide, like, I don't want to pull them out of another week of classes to make up five-hour state test. And so we have some circumstances. But you have to be really narrow in that band to still meet the thresholds.
So when all that data gets aggregated in a school or a grade level or a school district gets one number, this is what your test score is, is it fair to assume that school districts, they have a lot of multilingual learners or newcomers are somewhat disadvantaged? I mean, I've worked with a school district now, and they've got huge population coming from Ukraine. Is that, is that my observation? Would those kinds of school districts be disadvantaged in terms of a lot of these students required to take a standard test that they're not prepared for?
Yeah, I think, yes, I'm, I guess, careful in the use of like the term "not prepared", right? There are just some, you know, like a standardized test is going to create natural difficulties for, you know, students that just may not have had an opportunity yet to acquire a skillset that they need to be really successful. And, you know, again, we've shared this before as well, right? Again, it's on a, on a, on a good side. So if you, if you look at the problem sets that are part of IM, the new math material and some of the assessment, like, they're really rich problem sets. So IAR has really rich problems. In fact, I, you know, remember, as we were looking at it, recent meeting and even CAC, having a conversation with a couple of community members that really said, like, Jeff, are you kidding me? Like, who takes this test? And I said, "Our fourth graders take that, that test." Like, they're challenging problem sets. That's good, right? But then that's just an inherent sort of difficulty and struggle if you're, you know, lacking some of the sort of-
And they're very rich in language. They are not just, you know, multi-step problems where you're just like adding and subtracting numbers. That's not what it looks like any longer. That's like a shift, back to that word. That's a shift, right? So a lot of the assessments that our students are taking in our classroom materials, but also the state tests, are very rich in problem, like words and language.
Yeah, if we just say, I think at the elementary level, possibly early middle school level, I really think that's a disadvantage, you're setting kids up who are not language successful or achieving high language skills, but could do well with math. I mean, you, if they're not successful because of the language, then they think they're not good at math.
Yeah.
And they don't push themselves. It's just a-
It's hard, yeah.
It's hard, and it just seems wrong. It doesn't seem that we're meeting the needs of all students then.
And hence, I go back to what I said earlier, when I said those local implementation materials for IM, for middle school, this is where we have a middle school multilingual coach. And she's specifically working to make sure our kids will be successful with that curriculum.
And so even, so even English, native English-speaking students who are struggling with language, we set them up to not be successful in math as well. So they're not successful in reading and not successful in math. So do we have, like, how do we help them see that they really can succeed in math, but the languages? I mean, I actually, four kids had this happen to one. It's discouraging to those kids.
Chris, you were going to say?
Yeah, I would just say, after I've seen such a successful student, most of them have such others. I mean, really, our, the rate tool we have now in FastBridge allows us to see growth. So, and you're going to see students can see their own growth, classroom students can see growth, they can bring life for students, and just simple observation, and critical role in classrooms, and recognizing the highest profile of the classroom, and then those students will all have a good seat, they may have students that are, show high achievement on the IAR, but they're outperforming the role of our students. So there's one way that we're getting at, building that count, and it's up in another way to say, you're growing, you're dating, you're on track.
But on a, it's right, I think just, you know, when you bring it down to a child, like on a daily basis, to be struggling with math because you can't get the reading, you know, that's, I think that's a difficult dilemma.
And the materials we selected as well, they have something called the math language routines. And there's eight math language routines, and that was one of the training sessions that we had. And so for every single lesson, there's a math language routine that allows our students to access the content better. And so it has those supports built in for our students.
So two questions. One, would you kind of explain that math language routine? And then my second question was, you mentioned that there were math coaches that specialize in their multilingual, whether at the middle school level. Do you also have those at the elementary level?
Yeah, so we have one, so I'll answer the coach part first. So we have a, at the elementary level, we have one individual in the multilingual department who serves in that like coordinator, coach- who serves in that like coordinator, coach role. And so she attends all of the math coach meetings and she works specifically from the lens of multilingual learners and how to support our staff in utilizing the resource for multilingual learners. And we have the same thing at the middle school level, one individual who's working with our, with our teams. And then math language routines, they're, they're, it's research that came from Stanford University. There's eight of them and they were developed to allow multilingual learners to best access math within the classroom. And so our staff were trained on those eight math language routines, just protocols and practices, that's it in each lesson.
So I'll kind of bring us back around even to the next section, just to say we kind of took a little tangent in getting to talking about test scores. Really the context for the multilingual piece was to understand that one specific element of the work plan and making sure ultimately that we have resources that are supporting our students and actually helping them to be successful. But I think we got a good context for where that came from.
It kind of took us down that rabbit hole, sorry.
All good.
I did, for the questions discussion part, I did put a document, this is the last document that sits in your green folder, it's just a note-taking sheet. And so I organized it by the three strategies that I'm presenting about tonight. And you can see that there's three columns on the document. This is actually a strategy I use with our teachers all the time. It's actually something that they use with students too. So it's just, has first like something you learned from that section and then maybe something that's, you know, squares with your hopes for our students or what's aligned with your hopes for our students. And then what might be a question that's still circling in your head. So feel free to use that as I continue to present the next few sections. Okay, so we're gonna move into that next strategy on Vision 2026, which is design and implement a balanced assessment system. So again, starting with what has, what was included in the work plan this year. So three items, first, the implementation of FastBridge. Second, a focus on the IM classroom assessments, which we've talked a little bit about already. And then third, the implementation of the new analytics platform. So what have we accomplished? So to begin with, we have redesigned our dashboard. And so that redesign came after a lot of work last year, engaging with both our administrative team and our citizens advisory committee. And the feedback we heard was, we, that really wanted more information on the dashboard, specifically by grade level bands. So as a reminder, our previous dashboard had one metric that sat on it for math, one for reading, and now we actually have seven for math. And that includes high school as well. And so here you see an image of the information that sits on our dashboard for FastBridge. Last spring, we did administer FastBridge through our, for our second through eighth grade students, so we have baseline data there. We will have baseline data for our K1 students after this spring. And so in second through fifth grade, our baseline is 66%. We've also worked this year to set a goal of increasing our results by 12% by, through our Vision 2026 strategic plan. So spring of 2026, an increase by 12%. So we are trending in the right direction. So our winter data has come in and you can see we're up 1% for second through fifth grade and we're up 3% at middle school.
And that's start of the year to winter?
It's, it's based, it's up over the baseline from the spring.
Okay. And we talk a lot about FastBridge, but just for my refresher, those are, that's aligned with the Illinois learning standards, right?
Yes. Just, I do want to give a reminder though. The IAR assessment though is different from FastBridge because there are those writing components specifically in ELA. So when we get to IAR, we have half the test on reading, half the test on writing, where that isn't in FastBridge. And IAR also has problems where students have to do some writing in math. That's not a part of FastBridge. So it's not an exact duplicate test, but it has the same standards.
Melissa, just to refresh my memory, so in the past, we used local assessments three times a year, but now we've replaced that with FastBridge. But in the past with local assessments, in the fall, we didn't expect students to score high and we wanted to see that growth over time. So this doesn't seem the same, like we would expect us, we would expect a jump in the winter and then a jump in the spring and then to fall again in the, in the fall. How local assessments was?
Right, and the local assessments were grade level test. So yes, they look different. So fifth grader taking that test at the beginning of the year, it's all fifth grade content. So clearly we, we wouldn't expect them to have mastery of all fifth grade content at the beginning of the year. FastBridge is a little different because it adapts. So every time that student takes that test, it picks up from where their proficiency was and then it moves up or down.
So then compared to when they took it in the fall, if they take it in the spring, to achieve a higher score in the spring, you would have had to have growth.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so if their knowledge was the same in the spring, or I'm sorry, in the fall and in the winter, you would see a drop?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That target for proficiency adjusts as the school year goes on. It's gonna get more difficult.
Which it didn't use to adjust with local assessment, correct? Okay, thank you, sorry.
So yeah, that bar changes as the year goes on. Okay, so again, we have more metrics on our dashboard as well for reading in ELA. And so here you just see that image for FastBridge, just like you did for math. At the elementary level, winter results stayed the same. At the middle school level, unfortunately, not trending in the right direction there. We went, we had, we saw a little decrease. And so this just supports the work that we're doing. It supports the idea that first and foremost, that curriculum work is incredibly important. At the elementary level, we have our reading coaches. At the middle school level, I think one of the things that we can really celebrate in math is, one, we did that curriculum work, but two, we have those math coaches that we put in place that have been a really strong support for our staff. We don't currently have that at the middle school level, so that's just another reminder.
So if you look at the second column, two, five, and you see a lot of growth in those students, you would, one might believe that as those students get into sixth, seventh and eighth grade, that they might continue that growth. Is that correct? So is that why we start with, you know, the new curriculum at the K5 level and then build it up?
Yeah, exactly. It's certainly a conversation that we have had. In fact, we, we had that conversation this week. Administrators expressed they very much have valued having the math coaches and have expressed that ELA coaches would also be valuable. Okay, this is actually the same slide that the board saw in the fall when we went through a deep dive of FastBridge. And so we always go through that same process after each administration of, of FastBridge. And so we took the assessment in the fall, we've taken it in the winter, and then we will take that again in the, in the spring. So after our students took it in the winter, which was just before winter break, then we went into analysis and interpretation mode of the data. And so Dr. Ozmakowski always does a really phenomenal job of working with our administrators in a small group setting or even one-on-one, looking at their, their data and making plans. So she worked, she works with our principals, they all work, walk away with a plan that they're going to implement. We also engaged in, or each of our principals led building data dives. I had the opportunity to watch two middle school principals lead that building data dive. I, they operated almost exactly in the same way. They shared their current achievement of their school compared to the goals that Dr. Ozmakowski had set with them at the very beginning of the school year. They shared where there were successes. They were very honest with their staff where they saw opportunities for improvement. And I also heard each of those principals say they were following up with individual small groups of teachers to get in and dive in at the student level. So they were talking about individual students and exactly the plans that were going to be in place for them. As an SLT, we also engaged in a data dive, looking at how student performance looks across buildings and across the district. Something new that we did this year was part of our mid-year principal conferences and I'll actually turn that over to Dr. Salagi to talk more about. And I did that exact same thing with the middle school principals as well. So it was really powerful to sit down with every one of those principals and hear what they were individually doing. As a reminder as well, here's something else that we've put in place this year. We are reporting that data to our parents. And so our scores, the scores of their students were shared with them for the fall and the winter administration. They can actually access those through ParentView. And we, each of our principals sent out an email, Mrs. Layacano helped design that communication and it really included an explanation of the assessment, how to access that information in ParentView and then who to contact with questions.
Just a quick shout out to CAC as well. They gave us some really valuable feedback on how we had, initially, I think we had a communication that was really detailed and it had a lot of information that was really, really important, but I think collectively CAC just says too much for one communication. And so they kind of helped us to ultimately provide the same information, but do it through like a series of links that made it a bit more consumable, yet still kind of had the drill in. So I just, I wanted to mention that, that group was extremely helpful in helping us to move that out.
So assessment isn't just about FastBridge or the state. The most important assessments are really the ones that we give our students every day in the classroom that inform what we do. And so with IM, we do have common assessments that our teachers are utilizing and are able to have conversations collectively as a grade level team. And so I mentioned before in our professional learning plan, we have something called collaborative plan. So each of our grade levels got that half day to work together with their math coaches. And with that, they really took a unit and they looked at every assessment that's included in that unit, so they would be familiar with what students need to know and be able to do. And the units also have some diagnostic assessments that happen before the unit begins. And we've also put out guidance to our principals on how to best utilize those assessments for professional learning conversations. As a reminder, the board approved our student analytics lab in September. And so Dr. Ozmakowski, Mr. Spencer have been working behind the scenes, Lauren Morris on, you know, getting all of the data migrated so that we can start to utilize that. And so our Vision 2026 data will be included in that new analytics system. So our building principals, you know, will be empowered even further and our teams as well. So we rolled that out to our EC12 administrative team in February. Dr. Ozmakowski is working with building leaders on supporting them with the use of that tool. So what are our next steps? We will administer FastBridge in May. We'll utilize those results to prepare for next school year. We will continue to support our staff with the use of the analytics tool. And then another thing as well is we, we recognize as well, we're, because we have these common assessments with IM, because we are gonna be rolling out ELA materials that will have assessments, we recognize there's a space now for a technology tool that allows students to take an assessment and it can do some analytics and gather information for our students and allow our teachers to have access to student results in an organized manner.
You can go to the questions.
Okay.
Does anyone have a question? So is there a way to, since we have that data from FastBridge in May, is there a way to personalize maybe like summer program? programs for students based on where they are? Um, just make suggestions to the parents, to the students, like given, given where you are in this year, where you want, we want to make sure you get to in the, in the, for the start of the school year or next year. Is there a way to kind of prepare a personalized package for those students, you know, over the course of the summer, should they choose to do it?
I actually feel like our teachers would be utilizing the classroom assessments even further to actually give parents good guidance on where students' strengths are and where they have opportunities to grow.
And I think part of your question though, it's again, sort of fair on the, the data piece was to, to how do we utilize some of the information we have to determine when it's appropriate as well to kind of extend, uh, learning opportunity. And I, I think that's a fair question. I think what we found, truth be told, coming out of the pandemic is there was some fatigue with summer learning, even, even last summer, both student level and, and even, you know, to some degree, staff level. There just was some fatigue with opportunities through the summer. We actually had more resources to apply to like some tutoring opportunities than ultimately even got, were, were able to be taken advantage of. But I think it's a good question for us to reconsider as we look ahead to, you know, to this summer. Chris has been doing some work even outside of the academic space and looking at like behavioral needs and, and how we utilize some kind of early summer, early school year programming to sort of shore some gaps. So I, I think it's a fair question.
Fine. It's, it goes to the question we've talked about a lot. We have FastBridge data, which is more actionable for us. You know, that's in May. I, I think it's April, they, all the students take IAR and we don't get that information until it's way too late. It's almost.
Can't do anything in the summer.
Right. So it doesn't, it doesn't help prepare kids for the next school year. And so they suffer from that learning gap.
I actually thought of something I should have mentioned. Um, so with our winter results, Mr. Chatterster, who is our new director for middle school instruction, he looked at trends and he's actually engaging with the assistant principals at the two high schools to consider the trends from the winter FastBridge administration for freshman bridge that we've always run and really, um, bringing that high school team in to be more knowledgeable about their incoming ninth graders and the needs that they have. So yes, we are utilizing it in that way actually now.
Have we ever thought of like a middle school bridge, you know, for, for our elementary students that maybe could use that little bit of a boost to get them ready for middle school? I mean, just a thought. Oh, and I don't know if there would be, um, parents wanting that as well. Some people do.
It's consideration.
Their summer's protected. But just to, I know it's been helpful there. I know it's that those bridges for our AP classes have been really, really helpful. I just didn't know if there was maybe, because I know sometimes at those transitional points.
Yeah. It, it's certainly a consideration. Um, another piece that Mr. Chatterster is actually working on, um, not driven really from FastBridge data, but driven from a need for a bridge, is our students who, um, enter into the PACE program, not in third grade math, but in future years. Our PACE specialists have identified that there's an opportunity to provide some summer learning for those students. And so Mr. Chatterster is actually working on, um, with that staff and identifying what that bridge opportunity could be. Okay, we've reached our, um, third strategy. And so this last one is about preparing our students for a range of post-secondary opportunities. Once again, I'll review what was included in our work plan. So it was really two big areas, career pathways and then early college coursework and industry recognized credentials. And so what has been accomplished? So this goes back to our dashboard. And, um, so we've always had on our dashboard this, um, metric about students completing advanced coursework. And so we expanded the definition of that this year to, with our new dashboard to include, um, the students who earn an industry recognized credential. And we felt that that should be expanded because, well, first and foremost, students who earn an industry recognized credential, they have a leg up in the labor market when they graduate. And two, um, it's really important for our students who are not going to go on to, um, post-secondary college or university that they have that credential or our students who need to work and are, um, attending school at the same time. And so we felt that this, um, had the same weight as, um, you know, AP or dual credit as well. So that's why we expanded that. But with that as well, it allowed us the opportunity to dig into those students, um, that are a part of that programming. So students who receive an industry recognized credential, that program is through Technology Center of DuPage or TCD. Wonderful program for our students. Um, and we really have engaged to work with them more collaboratively so we can support our students. And we identified two work plan areas. First and foremost, one, we've asked that we get a monthly calendar that outlines when every one of those industry recognized credential assessments takes place so that our counselors can support the students, um, and be in communication with the families or the students specifically. And so TCD is, um, near completion of that. And then two, we've asked, um, for more data sharing. So we've received, last year, we received the percentage of students who earned an industry recognized credential, which is valuable, but we also want to receive that data at the semester. And so we're working with TCD to set up systems so that we can not wait until the end of the year to find out if our students were successful or not, but find out if they are on track throughout the year, just like we do with all of our other assessment systems. So.
Can you refresh my memory on what some of these, um, credentials are? What programs?
Um, there are many programs that have an industry recognized credential. Um, and so, you know, like EMT they have, or nursing, or.
Cosmetology.
Yeah. What did you say?
Auto, auto.
Auto.
Yeah, there's actually eighteen different programs that are at TCD. A couple of them, um, there's a very small handful of the eighteen programs, um, that require students to continue on beyond the time they'd be with us. Cosmetology is actually one of them. They, um, within the time they're with, with us, they couldn't earn that credential, but they could continue on. It's just a very small number of programs.
And that's actually where I'm kind of going with it. Cause some, like nursing, um, I don't know what, um, somebody that got a credential here, you know, what kind of job they could go get as opposed to completing college and, you know, to become an RN or whatever. But what, what credentials, you know, I mean, I, it's, I'm, I'm actually encouraged by kind of the renewed emphasis on not everybody going to college. And, and I know they don't have everything at TCD, but you know, whether it's, you know, there's, there's still trade school probably for a lot of trades, you know, electricians or welders. But, um, that's what I was just trying to get a sense of.
Yeah. So a really good example is actually the early childhood program that's at TCD. And so, um, you could earn the first gateway credential through TCD, which is, you could get an, an entry job at, you know, a daycare and be certified for that. But you would certainly want to continue on in your education to be a licensed early childhood educator. So it gets you on the right track.
Thanks.
Yeah. Can you refresh my memory on how many students we have at TCD? And of those, I'm going to ask three questions in a row here. Um, of those that are in a program that you can receive a credential, how many of them actually, um, achieve that credential at the end? And are there any trends in their increases?
Um, yes. So, um, last, I can speak to last year's data with accuracy. Um, and I don't have the exact number for this year, but last year we had about a hundred and fifty students between our two campuses that attended TCD. When we dove into the data, forty-seven percent of them earned a credential. But you also have to remember a small handful of those students are unable to get a credential based on the programming. But we certainly, um, saw that we could support our students better. And this is why we set these two goals specifically to better support our students at TCD.
Are all of the programs at TCD credential eligible or just, I, I know that with cosmetology, some of them can't get the credentials because it's a criteria that they're there. But are there some programs that don't re, don't have credentials yet? I'm just curious of the students that do take a program that has a credential route, um, how many of them are, are.
Um, I just want to make sure I, I think, I heard a lot of questions. I just want to make sure I have clarity. What's exactly your question?
Do, uh, all of the programs at TCD result in a credential at the end or are they?
Many of them do, but not all. Cosmetology is one of them. Um, the nursing program potentially is also a, another that does not. I, I would need to look at that for accuracy. I know cosmetology for, most definitely is not. You cannot earn it by the end.
Okay.
But a majority of the programs you can.
Charlie, is there, is there a certificate in culinary?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay. And what about video game design? I know there's the whole video game.
Yeah, I know the video game outlook. I have the documents up. I don't know that for sure, but I, the majority, like Melissa said, majority of them do have credentials, but some do not. Like cosmetology, there's so many more hours they have to get after the fact. And they have up to seven years to get that credential, but when, to get the certification when they're done.
But this is exactly, you're asking the questions like we really dug into. And, um, this is why we, we've asked to work with TCD to get that monthly calendar so that we can make sure we're really informed about when those credential assessments take place.
And if you're actually looking to, to, to push out, um, um, their, um, their, their five.
Okay.
Um, you would like to change and, um, their, their, um, celebration company or what?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, their website is very informative.
Yeah, if you go to the career pathways, like you can have data or, or a website, that they give you under each pathway, there's credentials.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, and so speaking of career pathways, one of the major projects we had this year was making sure all stakeholders were knowledgeable about career pathways. And so Mrs. Loyacano actually prepared a video. Um, I was going to ask that this actually be played. It's a four, four-minute video.
The, the days of just going to college just to find what you might want to do, those days are probably over. As a school, our job is to do our best to evolve with the demands and the needs of our students after they leave high school. And I believe career pathways will do just that.
Career pathways is a way for students to maximize their high school experience by having a different option for when they leave high school. So through the counseling center for career pathway exploration, we're hoping students come to take a career assessment, right, when they get here in eighth grade. Those results from that career survey will give them three potential career pathways they could follow throughout high school. Students are not locked into those pathways, but it's a way for us freshman year, right at the beginning, to really look at what are the career paths you might want to take in the future based on your interests? And how can we align your courses, your clubs and activities, your jobs? How can we make sure that aligns? So when you leave here, you have a set plan and feel comfortable and confident with what that looks like.
I decided to choose education as my career. I've always dreamed about being a teacher and like taking this class as, has gotten me to experience mom, working with kids. Getting hands on experience is awesome. And it's just really crazy to me that I'm in high school, but then I come here, it's like a real classroom. And I just get to like teach those things that like I learned like in fourth grade. And it's just like a head start to like my career. And I'm also building relationships for when I want to come back. And it's just a great opportunity.
Giving kids the opportunity to learn those career skills outside of high school is really giving them a benefit so that when they leave here, they feel comfortable and confident to go on to their next steps.
And that's super exciting because our students actually earn dual credit through COD before they actually graduate high school.
Technology Center at DuPage is a center in Addison. That is, um, an opportunity for any student in DuPage County to study specific career and technical education programs. So there's about eighteen programs at TCD that students can study for half of their school day specifically working on the skills towards that specific job. So it's giving kids the opportunity to learn those career skills outside of high school in one location and earning high school and a potential college credit at the same time.
My father, he has always wanted to be a mechanic himself. He wanted to also a tire shop or a engine shop. While growing up, he didn't have that opportunity in education. So I went to TCD and at first I just thought about being a mechanic. But once I went there to the classes and met the great people there, then I then knew for sure I wanted to be a mechanic. My time at TCD made me even more so excited to learn. It made me inspiration to continue doing things the way I want. It made my schedule full.
And I think helping kids realize that you can take whatever path you want, as long as you put in the work to get there. I think career pathways is going to help them realize that and get to that potential opportunity for them.
Then when it's like after District 200, hopefully they discovered opportunities that maybe were a fit for them, but they're also starting to discover their passions. So they are ready to go.
At the end of before-year experience for our students, our goal is that they have the ability to answer the question, what happens? What are you able to do? What do you enjoy doing? And what do you see yourself doing in the future? And I think this is a big step toward that.
All right. So, um.
I think the.
All right. So that is a great lead in because you heard about the internship with Intro to Teaching with our Sweden Morneville South student Peyton and Mrs. Hetherington over at Bauer. And, um, the, the slide had information about that program?
Yeah.
I think if you exit out, yeah. There we go. All right. So here are the facts about our Intro to Teaching internship. We have sixty-five students in semester one, forty-seven in semester two, sixty-nine cooperating teachers. That's because some teachers work together, um, and supporting students, nineteen District 200 schools. I'll explain why not all twenty in a moment. And students participate in at least thirty hours per semester. So sixty if they're in semester one and semester two. So I had an opportunity to, um, talk with the three teachers that are overseeing this program. They had so much great, wonderful things to say about it. They feel like, um, one of the big benefits of this course is students have figured out whether they do want to go into teaching or not. And this is actually why we have a difference between semester one and semester two. Because, you know, students, um, you know, realize, hey, and obviously it doesn't fit in every student's schedule, but they have had the opportunity to say, um, you know, I tried this out and it wasn't really a fit for me. Or students have said, I really enjoy this. I, um, you know, want to go into education. They've had that opportunity to be at different levels. Um, they've loved being at their former elementary building or our other middle school buildings. Um, they've made great relationships with staff members and, um, our mentors, all sixty-nine teachers have really done an amazing job. You can see some of them here in supporting those students. Um, so the State Board of Education also ha, supports this idea of career pathways. And they have something that they call an endorsement. So students can earn an endorsement on their transcript if they meet certain criteria. So if they do each one of these bullet points. So first and foremost, if they create an individualized college and career plan, we're doing that through SchoolLinks, the new program that you approved. Um, if they have hands-on or work-based learning experiences, this is why, um, they're not observing at Jefferson or participating at Jefferson. It wouldn't count towards the hours to get this. The state doesn't allow early childhood as part of the hours. Um, they have to complete two years of coursework in that particular area and they, um, you know, meet the standards for non-remedial coursework. So we do expect at the end of this year, we're going to have, um, a number of students that are going to earn this endorsement on their transcript. Um, so we've engaged in a process of planning for future career pathways work. And that has, um, we've talked to the board. We've talked to the board, obviously, about education. We've talked about the IT pathway, but we've also engaged with our high school leaders, engaged with CAC and utilized information from our eighth grade students and our ninth grade students to plan out where we go next with career pathways. And so on this slide, there's a lot of information here. Let me orient you to it. You're going to see the column is on the left are each of the 16 career clusters. And then you're going to see a column for our high school leaders, CAC and grade eight, nine students. So we collected data from those groups and we marked the, based on the results, the top three pathways each group recommended we further develop out. So the yellow indicates where our team then, looking at this information, decided we were going to make a commitment to further developing those pathways. So those pathways we've made a commitment to would be arts and audiovisual, tech and communication, health, science, science, engineering and mathematics. Now, this slide here, you've seen this before, but I've updated it. And so we've talked about that commitment to transferable gen ed courses. That's the first column. You approved the college composition course. We have a plan for other transferable courses in the following two years. The career pathways courses are also dual credit opportunities. And so we have fleshed this out further now. We are looking to add another education course that would be called K-12 Tech Integration. We would be developing out that arts, AV tech and communications pathway and offering dual credit there. And then we've slated the health, science pathway and the science, engineering and math pathway to be in the final year of the Vision 2026. The next few slides, there's a lot of information, but they just show possibilities of what we could do with each of these pathways. And so with the arts, AV tech, communications pathway, there's a lot of options at COD for coursework. So I listed several courses that could be possibilities. These are courses that area school districts do currently offer at their high schools, so that that's why we've listed those out as possibilities. And we already have courses in this area as well that are dual credit. TCD plays a big role in our career pathways, so I've listed out the programming that they have for the pathway. And I've also included possible work-based learning opportunities that we're thinking about in this one. We still have work to do there. And I've also captured for you what CAC said, why they felt like it was a pathway we should prioritize. So in this particular case, they felt like this pathway, there were skills that could translate to all fields and the idea of developing communication skills would be really important. So same formatting for health, science. And again, I draw your attention mostly to the the opportunities with dual credit with COD. So those are possibilities, not necessarily all courses we would offer, but just showing you what the options could be in the future. And of course, there's a strong component here as well at TCD. And then the final pathway really being that science, engineering and math pathway. For dual credit, you know that at middle school, we have project lead the way courses. There is actually project lead the way courses at the high schools. So that could be an option as well that we would want to explore and there's could be some opportunity for dual credit with that as well with this pathway. So again, this is not saying this is exactly what we're doing. It's just showing you what this could look like.
So that, any of those three, that's fine. So that that second bar, the big one with AP, COD, TCD. So you're kind of outlining the locations where those classes could align. Is there any thought to online options for students should should? We don't, not able to locate a location or a course that might fit with the actual pathway?
Yeah, I think it could be an option if we find ourselves needing to go outside of the COD option, that could be another possibility to explore. So next steps. One of the, our Vision 2026 plan with career pathways also did have a statement in there that we would review graduation requirements. That's a consideration that's out there because, you know, really our graduation requirements weren't designed with career pathways in mind. With this work, we certainly want to also give our students an opportunity to access work-based learning or internships. We wouldn't look at lowering graduation requirements and we would also, of course, be looking at what colleges and universities expect. So that's something in that like next steps based on this being identified in Vision 2026. And then other next steps. We want to continue to support our students even after they're done with Intro to Teaching so that they come back to us as teachers. We want to continue that work that we've started with TCD. We want to continue to develop out more dual credit course opportunities. At the March Board of Education meeting, we will provide an update to the board about high school grading. That's on the docket. Part of our Vision 2026 plan for career pathways also mentioned aligning middle school electives to career pathways. So we recognize that as work that also needs to take place. And then, of course, planning for the following school year. And that brings us to our last questions and discussions.
I have a question on the the teaching internship. So the Semester Two of 47, is that 47 of 65?
Forty seven students, yes.
So there were 65 in the first semester.
And there's 47 now.
And is it the 47 are part of the 65 from the first semester?
Yes.
Is it a full, it's a full year?
No, it's two semesters. So there's Semester One course, so Intro to Teaching One, and then Semester Two is Intro to Teaching Two.
So Intro to Teaching Two, when would students sign up for that?
They would have signed up for that last school year, like during course selection.
Because it almost sounded when you were talking about it like, like 18 kids decided they didn't want to care, move on, but that might not be the case.
Correct, correct. It's probably more students who.
Just wanted to try it?
Yeah, they wanted to give it a try.
There were some students that did not at the onset, sign up for both. Some that just took one.
Yeah, so it's not like they dropped.
Right, correct.
Because that's what I was a little concerned, or what I wanted to understand and.
Other questions or comments?
I got just kind of a, at the end of the middle school facility plan last week, I can't think of a summary, kind of high level summary. I thought I would do the same here and Dr. Schuler kind of alluded to that a little bit earlier at the beginning. And it's kind of a follow-up to a CAC conversation I had last week. So first off, huge kudos to the administration and the teachers for all the focus they've done on students and, you know, the focus on the beginning of their time here in District 200 all the way through graduation to help them, you know, carve the best path that's right for them. And I think over the course of, as you talked about, this school year, we've talked about a lot of educational and learning topics. We've talked about Fastbridge, we've talked about the dashboard, the report card, learning acceleration all the time. SEL, we've talked about programming for early learning and all the kindergarten. Talk about career pathways all the time. We've talked about student engagement outside the classroom. So, you know, there's so much focus on all aspects of student learning. You know, I think, I think we're focused on the whole child, not just like how they do to test. And so, you know, that's all recognition that students have different needs, different abilities, different backgrounds they bring to us. And I wish everyone understood that not everything can be measured on a test. And so, you know, I was in another school board meeting about a month ago and I heard this great quote that I've used like half a dozen times already that not all things can be measured. Not all things that can be measured count and all things that count can't be measured. And so I just, we have to remember that, I think, as we, as we talk about student learning and all the different aspects that, you know, we look at it on our dashboard to see how we're doing. It's not just one data point at one time of the year on one day that determines how well we're preparing kids for life after District 200. Thanks for everybody here in the room. Thanks for all the teachers that do this every day. We have the easy job as board members to ask softball questions. So I just appreciate it. It's been great.
I just have a comment, Brad. I agree with what you said. I think the concern that I would, that comes to mind is we do have some students who, who want to pursue those highly selective college, that secondary or the post-secondary education. And there's a certain level of achievement that a district needs to show for, because those schools look to where, like the rigor of our school. So I think it's a, it's a difficult thing to balance. And I don't know, I don't have an answer for that, but I just know that there are some students who, who benefit from having those higher achievement test scores. And as well as the district appearing, being rigorous, if that makes sense. Oh, and I'm not really. Thank you. I think my point was we can't just entirely dismiss test scores or how we measure achievement or, you know, even how the district has a whole rates academically. Because those higher selective schools are looking to what kind of district did you come from? What was the rigor that was provided? As well as everything else, I absolutely appreciate everything else. I'm just can't, yeah, that's just my.
I would say that I agree with that, however. I just went through a college enrollment or application process and it's all about activities. It's all about GPA. It's all about classes you take. Honestly, nobody required a test score to get into college.
I actually just went through the same thing with a senior and it was more highly selective school and it was a huge factor.
I think the point though, and again, the point back to the work and, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that, I mean, even in the three examples that I think Melissa shared in terms of build out and development, you saw three different pathways that actually are going to reflect different levels to some degree of rigor, right? So you go all the way to the last, the science, engineering, math piece, right? There's a heavy emphasis on AP high level opportunities. So I think everybody's right in this conversation, right? The, the reality of pathways work is that whatever interest in sort of path a student sees, the opportunity should be there. So Angela, to your point, I would never want, you know, so we have a sheet, I should share it with the, the board if you haven't, haven't seen it in a while, that both of our high schools have a profile, right? So when a student has to apply to a college and share the information sheet saying, what's the profile of Wheaton Warrenville South or Wheaton North? We need to proudly be able to present that sheet and know that it reflects high levels of rigor, coursework, you know, students. And again, I, I see it, right? I, I think, you know, bounce back, you know, this year, the pandemic, we, I think, I think the pathway exists, right? We saw probably more kids in the National Merit Program than we've seen in, in a couple of years. And so I think those pathways are there and they exist. But at the same time, you know, the, the TCD option, the, you know, some of those like industry credential options, like, you know, the young man you saw on the video, that has to exist. Like we got to do it all. Right? That's what we're trying to do is we're trying to, to kind of do it all and accomplish it all. Just to be clear, you asking about perhaps doing other videos like that? Yeah. Certainly something we can look at, how we can, we can continue to kind of build out some of those opportunities.
Other questions or comments before I go? Okay, I just have a couple of things. Going back to design and implement a balanced assessment system. I know that with IM, it's a, it's a comprehensive program. Whereas in the past, we've supplemented in things with other resources as we've needed it. Have we found so far the need to supplement areas that as we're using these assessments, we're finding holes or we're finding, are we looking at that to say? And if so, how are we communicating that out to our? I guess it's every month, you know, we meet with teachers and this is, IM is usually the, one of the conversations we're having. And, you know, in terms of that, that communication piece, if we see we have holes anywhere, are we putting together something for supplemental materials?
Yeah, I, I can actually identify something that Mrs. Moran has identified that she's going to be working on and that is for intervention. And so she actually has already identified, she, she wants to research some other intervention programs that could be used. But they have instructional coherence to IM. They fit IM. And so she already has actually started looking at that.
Okay, great. And then one other thing too that came out of having some conversations with teachers is somebody had asked a question to me in my, in my small teacher group about like, where could they find, it was kind of some, it was really dashboard data. But nobody knew the dashboard existed of the teachers that I was meeting with. And so if there's, and they were, they're a wonderful group and I got to tell you, we, they, we, everybody pulled out their phones, they pulled out their, they pulled up their dashboards and they're actually doing a little dashboard dig for our next meeting together so that they've kind of familiarized themselves. But I thought, you know, often, and I've been a teacher myself, you have that very myopic view of just what's in your environment. But sometimes seeing how that fits in the whole helps to understand why decisions are made sometimes, the way that they're being made. And so if we could just make sure we're, we're bringing them along in some of these discussions because we do have. discussions, because we do have a really great tool now with this dashboard that's out there. And I think everybody could kind of benefit, our community, all of our, you know, our staff, just kind of helping us to always remember that big picture. It's not just that, that little thing that they might be the part of at that time. So if we could just, that's just my comment, if we could kind of, kind of bring that along. All right. Thank you. Okay, we don't have anybody here.
Chris, I have one more thing really quick, just because I, I came across this recently. I thought it was interesting, so I thought I'd share it tonight if it's okay. So I'm going to send a couple each direction. So our dashboard, talking about our dashboard. So the dashboard product is done by ECR, ECR is a research group. And so because we utilize the dashboard as a part of our strategic plan, we do get access to some of the other tools that ECR has available. And one of them actually is this tool that I just shared with you, which is, is called an Illinois Report Card Analysis. And so I, I just want to sort of explain what it is, and this isn't necessarily for discussion tonight, but I think it's got some interesting information to, to look at. So if you go to what is really the third page in your packet, I think it reads page three of seven on, on the bottom. So that first, the second page is just, just kind of talks about the elements that are on the Illinois State Report Card. A little different way of framing data that I think actually is interesting and somewhat useful. So because we did not have, we had a couple of missing years of data, right? So 2019 was really the last full year of report card data. 2022 is last year's set of standardized results. We lost kind of two years in 2020 and 2021. To 2020, there was no test data. 2021, it was limited data because we didn't have all students in, in schools. So we often talk about like percent meets and exceeds, and that tends to be sometimes the metric that kind of gets picked on. But there's one other way that you can look at state test results over time. So if you go back the last 10 years, there have been six different versions of a state test, just in 10 years. And every time that the state adjusts, changes that test, it throws out the historical data because it, it is a new assessment and that sort of establishes a, a new benchmark. And you can see that if you look at a trend, 10-year sort of trend of test data, you'll see very marked spaces where Illinois made a significant shift and it changed, you know, kind of the outcome data. But at the end of the day, as with almost any result, but especially test score. And I, and I understand and I respect that, you know, people have a little different perspective around like value, utility, and importance. But at the end of the day, one thing that a test score does, that it helps you understand the performance of your students relative to the performance of every other student that's taking that same assessment, right? So it does have to some degree sort of a, of a sorting mechanism to it, right? A way to, to look at, at performance. And so one way often that that happens is through taking a test result and putting it into a percentile. So this chart, just to kind of help you understand what, what that means. So if you look at, for each of the results, so look at ELA proficiency, you'll see what the state value was on that test in 2019 versus the district value. But then you see the district percentile. So what that means is out of all of the school districts in the state of Illinois, we're outperforming 80% of those school districts, right? That's a percentile. How does our performance rate? And then if you carry it all the way across, you see the same percentile for the 2022 results. And then did that change, right? So if obviously the percentile went up, that meant our 2022 results were actually higher than what our 2019 results are relative to, you know, kind of balance of the state, you know, taking the, the test. And, and again, you, you see that both in ELA and math even more so, right? That, that both that percentile rate is higher, right? Our performance relative to other Illinois, all other Illinois schools taking the test, right? We're at the 88th percentile, right, of, of school districts, right, across the state, which is a little different way of kind of framing the, the data and information. And this goes down through really all of the, the test results to caveats. So I think, again, the good news, you know, I, so I point your, your attention to the ELA proficiency, especially point your attention to the two growth pieces. So in 2019, our growth scores looked terrible at the state level, especially when you look at that percentile piece. That means our growth relative to other school districts was not good. It has markedly improved as you move to 2022, right, where that growth is. So good performance relative to, to the state and higher growth scores, right? When you look at that as well.
How is that growth measured? Because it seems like most of these are pretty straightforward, participation.
So that at the state level, growth looks at by student, what was your performance in 2019? What was that expected performance then to the, to the next year? And how did your students progress? So what was their score increase relative to all of the other students that were at the same starting point from 2019?
And so the 29, the 2019 numbers that are low were comparing to 2018 or 17?
They were 2018 into 2019.
Thank you.
So anyway, just, I, I thought this was an interesting look and nice report that ECR provided. You know, again, you, you see lots of pluses as you go down that last column, which would, would suggest that our 2022 report card data, I think, showed some, some good progress in almost all areas within the, of the plan. There's two, two that kind of stand out, that eighth grade algebra metric, and that's one we've been on, looking at, showed a, moved the other direction. But grad rates are, actually, if you kind of look at our percentile, students moving on to college within 12 or 16 months, right? Again, from a percentile perspective, that increased and make sure some pretty positive data. There are a couple of other pages that are interesting to look at as well that show you both our student demographic relative to the, the state as well, which is just kind of interesting to, again, kind of understand what our student population looks like versus schools from around the state as well and provide some pretty interesting context, especially when you look at the results.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any, we don't have any public comments, so there being no further action to come before the board, an open session. I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption, 5 ILCS 120/2, subparagraph C, subparagraph 1, and 5 ILCS 120/2, subparagraph C, subparagraph 2. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think it was, who was it? Okay, Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Boothman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned to closed session. There is no action expected following closed session.
Are we going to do it in here so we can have them be a part of it?
We can, we'll take.
Okay, take it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.